Getting back to normal, we hope, and we appreciate your being here this morning. I'm Rosemary Altman. I'm chairman of the state board. I would remind you to silence your cell phones, please, if you haven't done so already. Our meeting is live streamed. We do have people who join us by live stream, and we're glad that they're there also. The only member we have joining by live stream is Dr. Eland. So, Dr. Eland, I'm going to ask you to -- I see you. I'm going to ask you to state your location, if you would, please, for the record.
Okay. Karen Eland, and I'm in Oxford, Mississippi.
Okay. And Micah, you are on, I see. Are you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Tell us, Micah Hill, who is one of our student representatives, is also joining us live stream. Would you tell us your location, please, Michael?
Yes, ma'am. Micah Hill, Oxford, Mississippi.
Okay. We -- the rest of the board is here, with the exception of Wendy Barrett. She's on her way. She's let us know that she's coming, so she'll be with us in just a minute. We will have our pledge and our invocation. Dr. McGee, he is going to lead our pledge, and Dr. Bass is going to lead our prayer, if you would stand with us, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand.
Justice for all.
Lord God, thank you for this day that we have gathered here today in person. Thank you for the teachers and administrators and the children and families that we serve. Dear God, we are gathered today asking for the wisdom to lead and guide the school districts in Mississippi to the best of our abilities. Lord God, we know that it is a great responsibility that is placed upon all of us, but we are asking you to guide us with your grace and wisdom. Amen.
Our first item for action is approval of minutes of the February 17th, 2022 board meeting. You've received copies of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
No move. Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Any -- all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Our agenda is next. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing nine, then the consent agenda. Are there any individual items you'd like to pull out on the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing nine, then we will vote to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor? Do we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm not in a hurry. I'm just reading ahead. Okay, we come to the fun part of our agenda, and that is the recognition ceremony. Dr. Benton?
It is the fun part. Good morning, Dr. Wright, Ms. Altman, and members of the state board. It's my honor to present to you today the board recognitions for the month of March. Today, we will honor the 2021 National Elementary and Secondary at Distinguished Schools for the State of Mississippi. Each year, the Office of Federal Programs is able to nominate two schools that meet or exceed the distinguished school criteria, and these schools must first demonstrate exceptional student performance and academic growth for two or more consecutive years. They must demonstrate closure of achievement gaps between student groups for two or more consecutive years, and they must show excellence in serving special populations of students. Each state can nominate up to two schools each year for this honor. The schools we recognize today have successfully used their ESEA federal dollars, those Title I dollars, to improve educational outcomes for their students. So, honorees, as I call your names, please join Ms. Altman and Dr. Wright at the front of the room.
Representing Cherokee Elementary School in the Pascagoula Goshay School District, we have an attendance today, Principal Greta Adams.
Let me tell you a little about Cherokee Elementary. Cherokee Elementary views each child as a valuable individual with the right to reach his or her fullest potential intellectually, socially, physically, and emotionally. Cherokee Elementary is a school-wide Title I school and home to the elementary gifted classes on the Pascagoula side of the school district. The school has a dedicated staff who support their students, who are English learners, and who build positive relationships with both English learners and their families. These relationships have diminished the cultural factor of uncertainty that often accompanies these little ones when they come into school, and it provides a place where not only the students but their families feel welcomed, where they feel comfortable asking questions, and just coming to school. The staff at Cherokee Elementary also dig really deep into the performance of students and provide individualized interventions and work to build a solid foundation of knowledge on which to close those achievement gaps. Every student at Cherokee Elementary receives 30 minutes every day of intervention and/or enrichment. Cherokee Elementary also participates in the district's Whole Child Initiative that's focused on enhancing students' social-emotional awareness and helping promote strong, healthy coping skills that foster that resilience that we know children need to be successful, not only in school but in life in general. So, today, we extend to you our sincere congratulations, Ms. Tate -- excuse me, Ms. Adams, and Cherokee Elementary on attaining this well-deserved honor. Congratulations.
The only thing I'd like to say is thank you very much. We work really hard for children and continue to be champion.
Our next honoree is Pierce Street Elementary in the Tupelo Public School District. Representing the school today, we have Principal Amy Tate.
Pierce Street Elementary strives to equip students to be prepared, dependable, and respectful. They want the students to also have a sense of integrity and to be enthusiastic about learning. One life lesson that is stressed to the students is, when you do good, you get good, and good things come to you in return. Positive behavior is a pillar of the school's culture, and you can hear students recognize for positive behavior, not just sometimes.
for positive behavior, not just sometimes, but each and every morning during those morning announcements. The team there strives to provide each school with an excellent education that capitalizes on their individual needs and promotes success. Here's a quote from Ms. Tate. "Our staff have unyielding expectations, a shared sense of responsibility, and a commitment to do what is best for each of our students." One additional strategy that exemplifies this commitment includes the employment of academic interventionists who identify individual student learning gaps, then respond with right-on-time supports and continuing monitor, continuous monitoring of progress to be sure that those academic outcomes are really solid and enduring. Pierce Street Elementary also places great value on family and community engagement, and we see that through the example of a program that they have called Real Men Stand Up, which is a mentoring and leadership program to help young men maintain positive mindsets and focus on becoming leaders of tomorrow. Congratulations, Pierce Street Elementary and Ms. Tate, on attaining this well-deserved honor.
I would just like to say thank you to each one of you. We all, the last two years have been quite trying. I will say that this came at a very timely, timely time for my staff in that, you know, we're used to being like, pat on the back, and the last two years have about taken the wind out of our sails, if you will. So this has breathed new life into our building, and it's really important. The school can be a true story about the idea that someone else recognizes all children has-
When we have these recognitions, it just underscores the good things that are going on in school districts across the state and the work that teachers and administrators are doing to try to meet the needs of such a diverse group of children. And as we all know, sometimes the days at school, the hours that they spend are the happiest hours of a child's life. And so, we appreciate what y'all do, and we thank you for it. We will now have our superintendent report.
Well, good morning. So over this past month, I had participated in two press conferences, one with the governor and one with the first lady. So the governor was honoring the military and recognizing the efforts that we're going to be putting into place to make sure that those transition times as children are moving from base to base or state to state is done seamlessly so the children can come in, feel welcomed, and hit the ground running. And the first lady authored a book called Fred the Turtle, and Fred has his adventures around the state of Mississippi and all the wonderful things that they can see around Mississippi. And so she had some help from some local artists as well in crafting that, and so all the little ones were in the room when the press conference was there. And they each got a book and each got a box of crayons, so that went really well. I've done a couple of keynotes. I did a keynote for Save the Children and talked about the work that we're doing here in Mississippi. Yesterday, I also spoke with the Virginia State Board of Education. They have just passed a literacy law, and so they were very interested in knowing what we had done with ours. Obviously, Mississippi has received the national recognition for the progress that we've made, and so they really wanted us to talk about, me particularly, to talk about what were the challenges, what were the ways that we went about this, et cetera. I also did a very similar presentation for the Public Affairs Research Council of Alabama. That is, it's kind of like a think tank that Alabama has put together. It's an amazing organization. It is a nonpartisan organization that does research, whether it's business or whether it's, you know, education or health. And then they will do the research and then make those recommendations to the agencies or to the governor. So I was asked to come across and talk about our literacy work there because Alabama is just starting this journey and want to make sure that all the components that we've used that have been successful, they wanted to use as well. I also did a presentation for the Mississippi Public Relations Association. That's a small group that gets together. It's kind of like the communications people, if you will, from all the different districts that house those people, and to talk about our journey and to talk about our progress. And then I was also asked by Chief for Change to do a, be on a panel, to talk about the essential qualities of a superintendent. So this was open to people around the nation that are aspiring to be a superintendent, whether they're in districts or whether they're in state government. And it really gave us a chance to talk about, from each of our own perspectives, because I was the only state chief that was there, but there was a district chief that was there, there was somebody from the urban area, et cetera. And so it was a chance to get everybody's perspective for those that are looking to do that work. And then last but not least, certainly, I have spent two days with the National Assessment Governing Board. We are in the process now of looking at the science standards and the science framework by which all children will be tested. As you know, NAEP is going on right now. The NAEP assessment will end at the end of this month, and the governing board is hoping to have those results out in fall. So this will be the first time this national assessment has been administered since 2019, when we did as well as we did. So this is a good chance for us to see where we were in 19 and where we are in 22. But all states will be looking for that information, so I'll certainly keep you posted as we move forward. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. My report, I have very little to report this month, other than I did follow up with Paulo on our retreat and spent some time talking with him, and then just, you know, the usual emails and phone calls and what have you this month. We haven't had any other meetings that I need to report on. Amy Zhang, our senior representative, is on a trip with her family, so she's not available to us this morning, but Micah Hill is here, and Micah has a report, so we'll get that set up. Micah, are you there?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here.
Okay. All right. We're, are you having fun, by the way?
I am. Y'all, the beach here is so nice.
Beach. Y'all get it. She's on a trip, too.
Yeah.
Okay, Michael, we have you, we have you set up, so you can go.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today, I wanted to share about how my school is doing academically based on our recent benchmark scores and progress towards our goal. So what exactly is our school's goal? As you may know, the school I attend is lower high school, and we're currently rated an F. However, I don't believe this solely reflects my school's capabilities towards students receiving an acceptable education. My school's goal is a C, and based on the data that I'll be discussing today, a special thank you to my principal, Dr. Bussford, for letting me borrow the data for this presentation. Our goal is not out of reach. So I'm going to give a quick disclaimer. The data that I'm discussing here is not yet finalized because my school has to factor in semester two data, which we have not finished yet. However, this data does represent the benchmark testing called Case 21. And Case 21 is a local benchmark that is not required by MBE, and my school uses it as an online testing source. So the data our school receives gives us a brief, gives us a brief overview of how close or far we are from our goal of reaching a C. So to go over our overall school, we want a proficiency of 30% in all subjects, which is reading, math, science/biology, and U.S. history. We want a 75% growth rate for reading and math, and we want a participation rate of 100% for our science and U.S. history test. So when we looked over our first benchmark assessment results, we had 22% proficiency rate and a 52% passing rate for our reading section. We didn't quite meet the overall school goal of 30% proficiency for this benchmark. However, on the math section, we had a 29% proficiency and a 62% passing rate, where the proficiency for the math section was 1% off from reaching our school goal. I have to say, I am very proud of the students performing in the science and biology section with a proficiency of 43% and a passing rate of 7. This lower high school went beyond the proficiency level by about 13%. And for our second benchmark assessment results, we passed our school goal of 32% proficiency in reading, and there's a 52% passing rate on the assessment. And for the math section, we actually decreased by 9% in proficiency and decreased by 12% from our last benchmark assessment. And our proficiency rate in biology was 44%, with a passing rate of 77%. Again, I'm very proud of the hard work that the students and the teachers have done at my school to prepare for the students, to prepare the students for the test. And for U.S. history, there's a 24% proficiency and a 60% passing rate. All the participation rates for the second benchmark met the overall school goal of at least 80%. So overall, I'm very proud of the students who took the assessments at my school because of the, they made in certain areas on the test, and thank you to all the teachers at my school who are continuing to impact this generation of students. And I'm a strong believer that a goal of a C is not far out of reach. And my family looking forward to the upcoming test results and hoping for more success for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I have every confidence that you're going to make it, because I think you're putting a lot of pressure on your school.
Thank you.
I think, I think you have a beak on this, and you're going to make it, so thanks for your help. Have fun for the rest of your vacation. Okay.
I will.
Okay. We have one subcommittee report. Dr. Bass, on the Accountability Subcommittee?
Yes. The School Performance and Accountability Subcommittee met this morning, and in addition to discussing some board items that are on our agenda today, we approved a program evaluation plan, and we also discussed the program evaluation, a program evaluation report about the Mississippi 21st Century Community Learning Centers. And then, most excitingly, we talked about, or we approved semifinalists for the student representative of the Mississippi State Board of Education. So we know that Amy Zhang will be leaving us after she graduates, and we have to approve a new student representative to the board. And so, over the past couple of weeks, myself, along with four other evaluators, evaluated over, I think, 45, well, 35 applications that were from, I think, 25 school districts, 27, 25 school districts and 27 schools, and they were very lengthy, and they all were great, and they had video components and essays and recommendation letters that were very lengthy, and we were able to take the top 12. So we can, at minimum, take the top 10, but there were 12 worthy applicants this time, and at this time, I'm going to announce those semifinalists. And so, we have Charlie Frugé, I hope I pronounced that right, from Oxford High School in Oxford School District, Keriston Gamble from North Pontotock High School in Pontotock County School District, Omer Jamil from DeSoto Central High School in DeSoto County, Catherine Newman from Ethel Attendance Center in Atala County, Madison Payne from Guffport High School in Guffport, Zachary Rifkin from Oak Grove High School in Lamar County, Cameron Robertson from Northwest Rankin High School in Rankin County, Bryce Smith from Brookhaven High School in Brookhaven School District, Jared Smith from Long Beach High School in Long Beach School District, Benjamin Torrey from Northwest Rankin High School in Rankin County, John Walker from Starkville High School in Starkville-Lock-Tibah Consolidated School District, and Kalen Welch from Pash Christian High School in Pash Christian Public School District. And these 12 semifinalists will be interviewed by the School Performance and Accountability Subcommittee for the next phase of the competitive selection process. And then, after that, the Subcommittee will recommend no more than four finalists to the entire state board for an interview in June. But I just want to congratulate these semifinalists. They put in some very hard work into their applications. I look forward to meeting you soon. And also, all of these 12 semifinalists will automatically be a part of Dr. Wright's Student Advisory Council, and so congratulations to them for that.
Thank you. I tell you, when you serve on that review board, going through all those applications, that is a yeoman's job. But prior to that, Sonya Amos and Donna Hales, in their office, have done a tremendous amount of work getting all these applications together, and it's a very thick application, and making contact with the schools and getting these things back, timestamping them, and on and on it goes, to get it to this point. So we appreciate the effort that they do to make sure that every school district in the state is notified of this and students have the opportunity. And you really, their videos are so creative, a lot of them are very creative, but it just is so fascinating to see these students and see all the things they're interested in and what they're accomplishing. So that'll be a fun, fun job for y'all, but it is a lot of work, so we appreciate that. And I think you see by the quality of representatives that we have, how, that it's, you know, there are just so many good things going on, and the cream rises, and we have been so impressed with what the results are. So thank you for that report. We'll move now into our board agenda and the action items. The first one is the revised Mississippi Perkins State Plan. This includes our work-based learning, part of our CTE. Dr. Benton?
Yes, ma'am. It'll take us just a minute to transition. We have the next four items.
Yes, you do.
Wendy Clemmons and I'll be going through this.
Stay at the table till lunchtime, it looks like.
Oh, no. No, 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 no. We're going to try to cover our content, keep it interesting, and answer your questions. All righty. So in item one, thank you again for allowing us to be here this morning, but in item number one, the Federal Office of Career Technical and Adult Education requires that all states adopt at least one CTE program quality indicator for Perkins Five. Now, these industry indicators, quality indicators can include industry certifications, CTE dual credit, and work-based learning. In December, we came to the board requesting that we be allowed to begin the public comment period to secure feedback from stakeholders across the state relative to us adding an additional measure of program quality that included work-based learning. And today, what we want to do is share with you what folks around the state had to say about that. As you will remember, we shared this before, this particular revision supports Goals Two and Five of our state board goals and absolutely supports your vision of making sure that our students are prepared for success when they leave the K-12 setting and for that next step in their lives. The graphic that you have here on this slide represents our goal of having quality work-based learning programs in Mississippi, and we feel like this is best accomplished by us aligning our work. And as you see displayed in that graphic, that would include aligning the components in our Perkins Five Plan with our Mississippi Work-Based Learning Operational Guide, and then with the legislation passed in 2020, the Mississippi Learn to Earn Act. And then with the legislation passed in 2020, the Mississippi Learn to Earn Act and apprenticeships who play a really big part of that act as do work-based learning opportunities. So what did we find out? Dr. Amy Brown and her staff went across the state and they offered three different formats and opportunities for stakeholders to weigh in on this recommendation. The first was a series of virtual public comment sessions. And you'll remember that was about the time that we had to start some quarantining in early January, so it prevented us from going face to face. And we had three of those meetings and there were twenty-three participants. And during those video calls, those virtual meetings, the feedback secured from these twenty-three individuals was all very positive and supportive of us moving forward with the inclusion of work-based learning. We also offered an additional period of public comment through our Mississippi Perkins State Plan meetings that were focused on the needs assessment. We knew that we were being able to go across the state that it opened up for us to do that. And so we had these five additional opportunities to garner feedback. And as you can see in the face-to-face sessions across the state, we had broader participation. We had two-hundred-and-seventy-six different participants and they represented business, industry, parents, educators. And the feedback secured there again was positive and in support of work-based learning opportunities being included. And then we had one final opportunity for those that didn't want to join virtually or in a face-to-face meeting to provide comments in written form. And we had two individuals that did that. That is in your backup. You actually have those comments there that were received and they're pictured here. And basically, they were requesting clarification. And the first individual that submitted wanted to know, what do we do if we don't have opportunities in a lot of industry in our community? And our response there is we have opportunities for simulated learning experiences. And we see that that's been a positive with the virtual opportunities that we are afforded now. And then that individual also asked, why is this important? Well, business and industry wants us to do that. And just think about teachers. We expect teachers to practice teach, right? Before they take a classroom. It makes good sense. It prepares you for that next step. And then finally, the second individual wanted to know about the National Health Science Assessment and wanted to be assured that that would still be included in the acceleration model. So we answered that affirmatively. So our request today, our recommendation, is that based on the positive feedback that we earned and garnered across the state is that you approve our recommendation to add work-based learning as a program quality measure in our Perkins Five State Plan. The revised plan will be effective for the 2223 school year.
Okay, thank you. Do you, anyone have any questions or comments about this? Dr. McGee?
Dr. Benton?
Yes, sir.
We discussed a little bit about this. Does this line up pretty well with the House Bill?
Yes, sir.
Regarding work-based learning?
It does. In fact, in the House Bill that-
Thirteen eighty-eight.
Yes, sir. That Dr. McGee is referencing, work-based learning is mentioned twice in that document. And so we are right in line with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Then do I have a motion under the Office of Chief Academic Officer to approve this item one?
So moved.
Second. Can I second it? I'm on that committee.
You may.
I seconded it.
Absolutely.
All right, we do have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, moving to the next one, which is the renewal of two districts of innovation.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm going to talk about two and three together if that's okay.
Okay.
And then, okay. The districts, our School of Innovation Initiative supports your, all six really, of our board's goals. Yeah, if you'll go ahead and go to that. And so we want to start, yeah, thank you very much. Launched in 2016, our district or School of Innovation Initiative and those designations were designed to give school districts and individual schools an opportunity to develop and implement new, new, and that's important, to their area, our creative alternatives to existing instructional and administrative practices. And all with a focus on intending to improve outcomes for students. Currently, and this map is a backup one, yeah, that's okay, that's okay. On this map, it's a little hard to see, but I believe you can make out the symbols for sure. We have currently eight districts of innovation represented with the stars. And then with the pentagon shape, those represent our early college high schools. And we have five of those across the state. And finally, with the green triangles there, we have nine middle high schools. And I want to just say that the early college high school and the middle college high schools, those are, the intent there is to really allow students the opportunity to not only complete high school, but also to earn a double A. And if not earn the full double A, to at least make great progress in getting some of that post-secondary experience at the same time. So we're really excited about what's taken place since this was first launched in 2016. So today, we bring forward two, and this is item number two, board item number two, two districts that we are recommending renewal of their application. And you see those pictured here. We have the Boonville School District. Boonville has done an amazing job offering and then expanding the number of virtual courses each year, not only for students in their district, but for districts across the state to participate in. They've opened that up and it has been really, really well-received, not only indicated by the number of students that enroll, but just by the increase in number of courses as well. And they've incorporated advanced placement courses. And we're really excited about that because that opens up an equity piece or adds an equity piece because more students, they may not have access to a teacher in their particular geographic area, but this removes that barrier. So Boonville is one of our districts we're recommending for renewal. And the second one is the Grenada School District. And Grenada has really been focused on early learning. And they have expanded the offering and the availability of early learning programs within the district. They're reaching out and partnering with those childcares in the community to make sure they open up more seats for students to attend. And they've also really ratcheted up student engagement. They've been focusing on that, not only getting them in the doors at four-year-olds, but then when they're there, let's make sure that we are keeping students actively engaged and connecting to that workforce and college and career readiness piece. And they've done that through the implementation of Project Lead the Way. And in this renewal, their renewal application, they also want to expand their counseling program and create a middle college program. So when they do that, we'll have ten then across the state.
May I interrupt you just a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you expand a little on the virtual course? We've not discussed that a lot, the virtual courses and how that works across the state. Give us an example of what they might do.
Okay. I'm going to defer to Ms. Clemmons on this one.
Sure. Currently, like I said, the approximately 1,000 students are enrolled in a virtual course with Boonville. They are just kind of, they're sort of like a vendor and they offer courses to students throughout the state. They offer courses to students, say, for example, you have a chemistry teacher who leaves in the middle of the year and they can't find somebody to finish that chemistry class. Of course, schools will call on Boonville to enroll in those classes. And they may have a paraprofessional or a certified teacher, maybe not in chemistry, in the classroom with the students, but they're getting the full instruction from this, from Boonville, okay? They might also have, like Dr. Benton mentioned with AP, just a situation where there may be one or two, three students in a school that want to take an AP class, but they don't have access to a teacher there. And so they will pull from Boonville and take the AP class and those students will be enrolled in that class.
Thank you. We just have not spent any time much discussing that and I wanted the board to be fully aware of what this district is doing and how that works in districts that have difficulty finding teachers to teach certain subjects, so.
So there are teachers in Boonville who teach?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
And these courses are also approved by the department.
They are approved.
That's just not something you can just make up and start offering. There's a vetting process for our online approval process.
Do they get extra funding from the state if they get approved? So they do this all on their own?
Yes.
It's a wonderful way to serve underserved students in underserved areas, so.
But I do believe the districts that can't, they pay. If you're not in Boonville-
Right.
And you're saying you're down in Gulfport and Gulfport wants to take advantage of it, then Gulfport would pay for that course.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
And you know, this was started before we faced the challenge-
Yes, it was.
-associated with the pandemic. And so it's just, it really positioned them nicely and they've been able to help so many other districts.
All right, thank you. You can move on.
Did you, do you want to-
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, you're through with that one.
Yes, ma'am.
I got so excited about Boonville. You know, I just, you know, we just think about, we don't think about all those things that people are doing out there to be able to meet the needs of students. And that's a wonderful way to meet. And Boonville is not a large school district either, so. So item two is-
Before we both, I had one other question.
All right.
I noted in the backup material, one of the requests for the waivers they had, they wanted, Boonville wanted to pilot an online high school, but it was denied.
Yes.
But why?
I think one of the biggest reasons for the denial of that was that they wanted to pilot it, but they wanted it to be free from the accountability model.
That's right.
So students that they worked with, that brought, they brought in, they would not have anything to do with the accountability model. And if they bring them in and they're part of their school, then they, they're typically part of the accountability model.
Well, that's a federal requirement.
Right, a federal requirement.
That all children in the district have to be accounted for in the accountability model.
Okay. So with the students that are taking these one-off classes, if you will, whose accountability model do they fall under?
Their school districts.
Their homeschool.
So if there's a kid from Oak Grove that wants to take AP Chemistry and does it through Boonville, they take the class at Boonville, but they fall under, well, Lamar County's thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, right.
It just, it just seems to me, I think the idea of an online virtual high school is intriguing. So it just seems to me there should be some way that we can come up with a creative way for them to do it so there's not barriers for them to not do it. Because it seems like these programs that they are having with the one-off classes are successful. So I don't know, some opportunities to allow them to expand on it. And I hate proposing something without an answer. That's against my nature. But again, that's part of, that falls in the category of, I don't know what I don't know yet. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and I, to your point, I don't think that there's anything that would prohibit them from doing that, however comma, those children have to account in the accountability model. And I think that was the stumbling block. So if they're willing to do that and can, because virtual high schools are expensive, just very expensive. And we, I know that we've been looking at that. We've also been looking at the one that Florida's been putting into play. But it takes a lot of money to pull that off and to pull that off successfully. But those children still have to be accounted in the accountability model. And that was the stumbling block here.
Sure. And I understand that. I just, it seems to be there has to be a way to marry, to marry all that for them to try this. And again, I don't know the answer to that. I just see the issue.
Benefit of it.
Yeah. Thank you.
I know we talked about Boonville a great deal, but also in the backup material is Grenada's tremendous success on their graduation rate in the programs that they're doing. So that does not need to go unnoticed.
Yep. I think their third grade reading scores too, as well as the success rate there with their building blocks at the third, three and four-year-old level.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have a motion to approve these two districts of innovation?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item three is new districts, well, we've already done, go ahead. I know, we've got, we've got other ones. Go ahead, sorry.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. In item three, we have three schools or districts that we are bringing forward to recommend to you today. Our first that you see here is our first elementary school of innovation. So we're really excited about this one. And the recommendation is for Mansdale Upper Elementary in Madison County. And as you can see here in the bullets, this is just a little bit pull from their application for Mansdale Elementary. They are proposing to create something that we will refer to as a push-in program rather than pulling out students that are eligible for gifted. The gifted teacher will actually go into the classroom and the general education teacher and the gifted teacher will provide those services in the same classroom together. So all students will benefit from that. They will also create a school-wide gardening program, not just growing a few things, but actually looking at the business aspects of that. So that's pretty exciting. And they want to create a really robust teacher mentoring program, not only there within their schools, but even perhaps into those other elementary schools in the district. So we're excited about having our first elementary. All right? And then we have two new districts of innovation that we bring forward for your consideration. The first one here is the Pascagoula Goshay School District. One big component of their application was focused on expanding their CTE pathways programs. One way they propose doing that is having their teacher academy completers move right into employment as assistant teachers. That's building out that grow-your-own, that teacher pipeline, hoping that those assistant teachers will then go on and earn their degree and become teachers in the district. Also, when we really thought this was unique, the Health Science Academy students can complete their second year of CTE by earning their LPN certification with the community college there. So they would leave high school and walk right into a position. And those positions pay at least sixteen dollars an hour, sixteen to twenty dollars just on entry. So that's a, that's a good, good thing. And then the Starkville Octibah Hall Consolidated School District, they want to implement wall-to-wall career academies. You know, they have that new school campus on the campus of Mississippi State University and they want to expand their career days, their industry visits, really tap into that work-based learning piece that you saw brought forward in our Perkins Five Plan. And they want to implement project-based learning. I will say, they've also been deeply engaged in conversations with Ms. Clemmons and her team here around getting this done well and with fidelity. So these are our two districts and our one school that we bring forward to add to our districts of innovation initiative.
Any questions or comments about this proposal, these districts?
One question. The elementary school, that's kind of like inclusion in the gifted world, like we do it in special ed right now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Great idea.
It is a great idea.
It's the one I didn't think of at first.
But you can add it to your list.
I got too much of that information. Great idea, great idea.
Okay, any other questions? All right, under item three, the Office of Chief Academic Officer, we have a motion to approve these additional districts.
So moved. Blackened.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item four, to begin, this is to begin the APA process, this is to revise, well, anyway. I'm not using all those codes and things, I'm telling you. We live by codes here.
That's, that's absolutely correct. This item is brought forward by the Office of Secondary Education and it is intended to revise Rule 28.3, which is the access to a substantive and rigorous curriculum policy. And what we are trying to do with this particular item is really clarify for schools what we mean by accelerated classes, that all students should have the access to and the opportunity to participate in. And our request today is to simply open the APA process and allow stakeholders from across the state to review this policy and provide their comments.
All right, all, those of you who are in favor of opening up the APA process on this item? Aye?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know, I am so far ahead of myself today. I apologize, I'm not paying attention or something, but.
You were up late last night.
I was up late last night. You were right.
Testing all of us.
Let's start over. On item four, under the Office of Chief Academic Officer, do we have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Y'all are as far behind as our head in time. Okay, we do have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
We're going to move right along. Dr. Vandeford? Okay, this is item five. This is also to begin the APA process, to revise the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards. I'm gonna let you have the rest of it.
All right, thank you. Good morning. Just as a couple of reminders before we get started with this item. We did have an item last month to begin the APA process to revise the business rules of the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards that are related to the statewide accountability system. But if you look at your backup material, you may have noticed that those revisions from last month are not in the same backup material this month. And that's because that item is still out in the APA process and, and, and working its way through. I think it actually closes on March the 21st, and as of yesterday, we do not have any public comments. But since that public comment period has not closed, and we have not come back to the board to seek final approval of those revisions, that we cannot include them in any backup material moving forward for the public. And again, a second reminder is that today's item is Dr., or is Ms. Altman already mentioned, is to begin the APA process of the same business rules. But today's item is, is time-sensitive for a couple of reasons. We need to begin the APA process with a baseline of these proposed recommendations to get the process started, to open the public comment period, to inform the districts, and so that they'll be aware of what the final changes are prior to the end of the school year. So if you approve to begin the APA process today, we'll be able to bring you back, it'll be tight, but we'll be able to bring you back those public comments at your April meeting for your consideration of final approval. And, and secondly, it will allow us a reasonable timeframe for the submission of our one-year addendum to the business rules of the accountability system that we'll talk about throughout this presentation. So just briefly, this item is directly aligned with the mission of the State Board, and that's through the development of policy and accountability systems to ensure that all students are prepared to compete globally. The item also focuses on all of the Board's goals. They are just intertwined throughout when you look at the accountability system and the data that it provides. So for some background information, just for those of you that may be new to the Board, just want to remind everyone that there are no waivers in place for assessment and accountability for this current, the 2122 school year. And that's a result of the recension back in November of the executive order 1460 that the governor, when he declared or saved an emergency as a result of the pandemic. That executive order provided the State Board a great deal of flexibility around the suspension of some state laws, as well as multiple State Board policies. And so we were able to grant some waivers and flexibilities around assessment and accountability during that time. But since that has been rescinded, we have to follow all state law for the Literacy-Based Promotion Act, the assignment of A through F letter grades, et cetera, much of which I know that you've heard around your colleagues. On December 17th of 2021, we've talked a lot about the federal guidance that was released from the United States Department of Education that allows us to submit for approval of a one-year temporary addendum to make necessary changes to the accountability system. And so this presentation is going to actually walk through the proposal that we have at this time prior to the APA comment period. So again, as we've talked a lot about, we've raved about our 97% participation rate that we had during the last or the previous school year, for the 2021 school year. So therefore, we believe we have a complete and reliable set of data that reflects student performance. And, but we have some colleagues in other states that either did not administer an assessment or had very low participation rates. We've also worked very closely with the Center for Assessment and the Technical Advisory Committee to ensure that the data set that we do have adequately represents all of the subgroups and that it is considered to be technically complete. So just as a reminder, when I talk about the Center for Assessment, the Board has approved annually a contract with the Center for Assessment to provide technical assistance and oversight of an organization of our Technical Advisory Committee. So we have at our fingertips a very, I, I just, I don't know how many offhand psychometricians and experts that the Center employs, but, but they are our technical advisors that we can reach out to at any time. So although there, as I mentioned, that the data set for 2021 is considered complete, there are some missing assessment data that we need for a couple of the components in order to have the calculations or complete the calculations for the accountability system. So on slide seven, this is just an overview of our objectives for accountability measures for this school year. We really want to minimize the changes to the business rules to allow for as much longitudinal comparability that we can have. So we, we recognize that there's been disruptions as a result of the pandemic, but we want to minimize the changes to the business rules so that we still can have, to the extent possible, that longitudinal comparability. And in accordance with federal guidance, going back to that 97% participation rate, we will only be allowed to make the necessary adjustments for one year for the data that we have missing. And we also want to ensure that as we look at these adjustments, that they are equitable and that they're evidence-based as we make our decisions, and that they're consistent with the policies that we currently have established that support the mission of the State Board of Education. And finally, listed here, we want to minimize the use of pre-pandemic data to ensure that the accountability measures are reflective of the actual impact of the pandemic. So we're very aware, you know, through conversations with, with stakeholders throughout the, the state around this concern, but it's very important to us as a state educational agency that we do not mask the data, that we do not mask the impact that we have as a result of the pandemic. So a couple of comments that are not on the slide that I would like to add is going back in time. You know, we've had a lot of conversation over the honesty gap from years past. And it has taken us over 10 years to recover from those conversations back when we administered, for those of you that may remember, the MCT and the MCT II assessments, and how they failed to meet that rigorous assessment or in alignment to rigorous curriculum. And over time, that's one of the things that we can attribute our progress to, is having these rigorous sets of curriculum and the rigorous assessments that are aligned to that curriculum. And so I'll just share, back in 1819, which is our last data set, you know, prior to the pandemic, I never will forget being at the table and sharing this data, and Dr. Wright and all the assessment, accountability, all the agency was so excited to share the data with the TAC. And we had some pushback from one of our, a couple of our technical advisory committees and said, well, you know what? The test of this is gonna be when those NAP results come in. If your NAP results align to these assessment and accountability results, we'll know how valid and reliable these results are. And so when those NAP results came in and verified that that was a true and accurate and reliable measure. And so we just, I don't, personally, this is me speaking, I don't want to have to revisit those days when we are challenging, knowing that we're on the heels to Dr. Wright's point, we're, we're wrapping up the NAP administration and we'll be receiving NAP assessments. We certainly want our statewide assessments and our results to, to be aligned with what we see nationally reported from NAP. And then again, just a reminder back to the equity statement, how hard it is, just as we're looking for modifications or, or needing modifications to the business rules to ensure that those are equitable, that they do not favor one particular population of schools or districts or one particular subgroup of students that are included in the model. So equity is a very important focus for us as we move forward. So to begin with some of the needed temporary adjustments, and we're going to walk through three. The first two, which will be related to banked high school end-of-course assessments. And just as a reminder, the feds require that we administer assessments at least one time in grades 10 through 12 in content areas of ELA, math, and science. And so since we as a state allow students to begin earning Carnegie unit credits as early as the seventh grade, provided that the content is the same, those assess, those students that earn that Carnegie unit must also take that assessment. But they're taking the assessment prior to the 10th grade. So our business rules allow for what we refer to as banking. We hold those scores until that student is enrolled in the 10th grade. And then to meet the federal requirement, going back to an early conver, or conversation about the, the online high school proposal, then we include those students in the model so that we meet that federal requirement that all students have been included in the model. So in this case, the academic achievement indicator may be missing assessment scores from 1920, either for growth proficiency or both. And if you recall, 1920 is the school year where no assessments were administered and no accountability results were produced. And also, we must determine the exit criteria for school improvement identifications that are needed to be adjusted for missing data that we have. So on slide 10, we've made a couple of adjustments. I mean, the, it, it's great to have the opportunity to run through your slide deck in the subcommittee, because then, I, I knew when I, I was looking at the slide in the subcommittee, something wasn't quite right. And, and what I failed to do was break down the groups of students that, that we're referencing into the two different school years that they apply. So the slide that you have at your desk, or at your table, I'm sorry, is, it doesn't break down those that actually were assessed in 2021 and those students that should have assessed in 1920 when no assessments were provided. So adjustments will be necessary for this school year due to a miss, missing assessment scores for the 2020 assessment period. And this is going to impact the measure for approximately 560 students that took English II in the ninth grade and 25,000 students that took Algebra I in the ninth grade. And, and here's where I didn't break it down, during the 2021 school year, that was last year. And 2,200 students that took Algebra I in the eighth grade received the Carnegie unit in eighth grade, but did not take an assessment in the eighth grade because no assessments were administered in the 1920 school year. So I, I kind of flubbed up a little bit in the task force meeting by grouping them all into one school year. So the first proposed temporary change is for those 560 English II students and those 25,000 Algebra I students from the previous slide. This is, what this rule applies to, and so students with banked scores from 2021 that do not have a prior year score due to the suspension of the assessments in the 1920 school year, growth will be measured using the 1819 school year as their baseline year. So in full transparency, the MDE and the Technical Advisory Committee, we have modified the recommendation of the Accountability Task Force to align with federal guidance and to minimize the changes to our current business rules. So consistent with business rules that provide for measuring growth from the seventh grade math assessment to Algebra I students that test in the eighth grade, that, that take the course in the eighth grade and as well as test in the eighth grade, we'll just apply this same logic to these ninth graders that took English II and Algebra I in 2021, which is also known as skip year growth. And so we believe this minimizes the possible future disruptions to accountability measures. So I want to just take briefly just a moment to share with you some of the proposals that, that came out of the Accountability Task Force. Some had the desire to exclude the 2021 data from the accountability system altogether. So we have to report to the Department of Ed our participation rate. So if we come back and try to submit a one-year addendum and say we have missing or unreliable data, they're gonna say, well, you reported a 97% participation rate, so we don't necessarily agree that you have that concern. So there was also a recommendation to use legacy scores in lieu of banked scores. So we do, as we mentioned on a, or as I mentioned on a previous slide, we want to minimize the use of pre-pandemic data to avoid masking the impact of the pandemic. There was a recommendation to use the higher of the legacy score, growth score, or skip year growth score. So again, this just introduced more pre-pandemic data into the model. Wanted to discontinue the use of banking of high school end-of-course assessments altogether. So we would not have complied with the Department of Ed if we'd done this, because we would have students that would have never been included in the accountability system. And so as we made the modifications to the Accountability Task Force recommendation, as, as I previously mentioned, we did consult with our Technical Advisory Committee. So the next proposed temporary change is related to those 2,200 eighth graders that took the course and received the Carnegie unit during the 1920 school year. But as referenced on slide 10, they were not given an assessment. And so these students that were enrolled in Algebra I and taken and banked assessments in 1920, but did not because of the suspension of the assessments, they'll have both their proficiency and growth measures in math from the 1819 school year included in the accountability measures for the 2021 school year. So this is consistent with the recommendation of the Accountability Task Force, and it just replaces the missing data that we have with the legacy data for approximately 2,200 students that are typically your higher performance students. So those are the two recommendations related to the banking of high school end-of-course assessments. So the next recommendation is all around school improvement identifications. So as you know, with federal requirements, we must classify schools as comprehensive support improvement, targeted support and improvement, or additional targeted support and improvement. So most of us, it just, you'll just hear us say CSI, TSI, or ATS. And so, but we have to make, based on federal guidance, classification decisions based on our 2122 data. And any school that exits this classification must satisfy our approved exit criteria. And so the MDE remains committed to our overall long-term goal of 70% proficiency for all students. But what we'll do is shift those timelines forward by two years. Dr. Robinson can correct me if I run, but I think that initial timeline was 2025 and we shifted that to 2027. And the next slide on slide 16 just gives you an overall view of our original comprehensive support improvement timeline, how this three-year cycle, how you move through the three-year cycle from your identification year through your three years, and then how you exit during that time. So the proposed temporary changes are consistent with the recommendation of the task force. We want to implement a traditional comprehensive support improvement classification based on the 2122 data as required by federal regulations. And schools classified in the CSI category in the fall of '22, based on the current year's data, would be re-examined for one year. So we're only looking for a one-year temporary solution. And then we would reset the traditional three-year cycle in the fall of 2023 based on the upcoming school year's data in 20. school year's data in 2023. So the slide 18 is just a representation of this new proposed three-year cycle based on the impact of COVID. So in summary, we're just breaking the three-year traditional cycle and introducing a one-year transitional identification year. So for the additional targeted support and improvement schools, those are the ones that have the low performing subgroup in the bottom 5% of all students for Title I-A schools. And so our original ESA plan escalates ATS to CSI after three years of consecutive identification as ATS. And so what we're proposing to do is to delay that cumulative ATS classification to CSI to the fall of next year. And we would not, if anyone had that cumulative effect, they would not be penalized for that. So slide 20 provides an overview of the comprehensive support improvement classification criteria. So the way schools are identified is that they have a graduation rate less than 67% or they score in the bottom 5% of Title I-A schools, or they've previously been identified as ATS for three consecutive years of subgroup performance in the bottom 5%. And our exit criteria is that they have to score above that bottom 5% and increase a letter grade or increase over the midpoint of the letter grade. So an example of that would be either move from an F to a D or move from the bottom half of the F to the top half of the F. So what we're proposing here on the next slide is that during this transitional year that would begin in the fall of '22, we would remove the criteria, the exit criteria to increase that letter grade or progress over the midpoint of that letter grade as part of the exit criteria for this current year. And then we would resume that identification cycle during the upcoming school year in 2023, '24. So the bottom line, we would restore our traditional identification criteria beginning in the fall of 2024. So the school improvement piece is a little bit easier to understand because we're just breaking that three-year cycle, putting in that one-year transitional year, and we're moving that requirement to approve one letter grade or to reach that over the midpoint of that. All right, next steps. Let's talk a little bit briefly for what we plan as the next steps moving forward if the board approves or grants approval to begin the APA process today. So we'll immediately file with the Secretary of State's office. And once we have our process in order there and it's uploaded to the system, we'll release it publicly and hopefully begin the APA comment period tomorrow. And that will run through 5:00 PM tentatively on April the 11th. We will treat this public comment period the same as we do any other. We will give strong consideration to any and all recommendations that are equitable, evidence-based, and psychometrically sound. Also, on Tuesday, on March the 22nd, the Accountability Task Force will meet again. And one of the primary purposes for this meeting is for the MDE to share with the Accountability Task Force the extensive data analysis that supports the rationale for these recommendations. So these data analyses will be from the assessment vendors that were conducted back after the spring of 2021 assessments were complete, from a study that the Center for Assessment did for us to ensure that we had a complete and reliable data set. We'll also share some information from the Technical Advisory Committee and some data that the MDE has analyzed in conjunction with the Center for Assessment. And so one thing that we were asked to do was to go back over three years of our data sets, so back from 1718 to 1819 and 2021, and to analyze that data and look for any uncharacteristic patterns in the data across school districts and schools, particularly the schools, over time for that three-year period. And then in April, at a date to be determined, sometime between the close of the APA comment period and the April 21st meeting of the board, we will convene a meeting of the Commission on School Accreditation, and we'll provide them an overview of the public comments and present to them a recommendation for their consideration and approval prior to the State Board meeting on April the 21st. April and May wide open across the state with multiple statewide assessment and administration periods. In June and July, there's always a post-administration review, but I just wanted to emphasize that today. And that post-administration review is twofold. On one hand, we'll have the assessment vendors looking at the data from the assessments that they are responsible for and those data files. We'll also have our technical advisors from the Center for Assessment analyzing the data. We'll present that data to the Technical Advisory Committee. And then MDE, our staff here across multiple program offices, also conduct a detailed analysis. And so the other part of that is that the local school districts and schools have an opportunity on two occasions. One, to review their assessment data file, and then when the preliminary calculations are available, those are provided to the district in a very detailed data file for their review as well. And then after we go through all of those steps, we'll be back to the board in August for an informational item presenting our assessment results for the 2122 school year. And then in September, once the final calculations are ready and have been gone through the process with the local school districts, then we'll produce those files, those final data files and grades, and they'll be presented to the Commission on School Accreditation for approval prior to the submission to the State Board of Education for approval. So I know that I took up quite a great deal of time today and I apologize, but wanted to try to give you as an in-depth overview of what we have for this recommendation to open the public comment period.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that, but just really big overview to make sure I think I understand it. The way the accountability model is done was interrupted because we don't have 1920 assessments. What y'all are proposing is a remedy as a stopgap to fix that problem. Do I have that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll just say, I like how you put it in the subcommittee that this is the starting point, that we, you know, we'll open it up for APA, see what they say. Because, you know, I've heard a lot of questions about this. A lot of people have anxiety about how accountability is going to be calculated. And so I think this is, you know, a good process for.
I would have to ask, since we're two years out from getting back to a traditional rotation of how we evaluate, is that correct, you're saying 2024?
Dr. McGee, can you speak into the mic just so I make sure everybody's hearing? Thank you.
Sure. So I hear you saying that we're two years out before we're getting back on the course that we were charting prior to the pandemic in 2024.
So that is the timeline for school improvement, identification, and exit criteria. So that's a three-year process. So what we're proposing, I mean, we have one-year stopgaps on all that's proposed, but that getting back on track for that cycle that you're referring to is actually related to school improvement, identification, and exit criteria. It's separate from our A through F accountability system.
And I'm sorry, just, I think this would be helpful to note that in the addendum template that we received from the federal department in regards to school improvement, they were more specific on the options that they thought that states should consider, and they kind of provided those options throughout the template so you could choose a one-year transitional period, a two-year transitional period. You could choose to move your goal forward, those sorts of things. So they kind of outlined all those sorts of options for the states to choose.
For school improvement.
For school improvement.
Now, what do the numbers look like of student participation from 1920 and 2021 and 2122? Because it appears to me, looking at our student population numbers, we've gone down since the beginning of the pandemic. And so will student participation numbers impact any of this?
So no, we've never had an issue overall statewide aggregate meeting that 95% threshold. To your point, our incounts, because our enrollment has decreased over time, our incounts have decreased over time. But Mississippi, to my knowledge, we've never had any concern over not meeting well over the 95% threshold for participation.
Well, I hear, I'm hearing from administrators from across the state, they have a grave concern about the scores from a variety of years, may result and are will result in a non-uniform score adaptability, I guess, going forward because of the different types of environments they were instructed in and also the different types of environments they were tested in, you know, going forward. Is it any relief in that arena? Because I'm afraid if we have, if we see some drops and we've got some superintendents that are exiting their career this time, and our requirement for our principals, right, to be in a rising number of letter grade or A or B, we may not have enough people to sit in some leadership positions.
So, yeah, go ahead. So to your point, and your question was so loaded, you asked so many questions in the same sentence, but I caught the last one. So, but talking about the superintendent eligibility criteria that you mentioned, and if you would allow us the opportunity, there is a state law that outlines that criteria that superintendents must meet. We have had some flexibility as a result of COVID over time since districts and schools have been held harmless. So we would need to consult with our legal team, take a look at the state law, and then the section of the state law that allows the state board to promulgate rules around that alternate criteria. So that would require some additional research.
I think we're talking about two separate things here.
And I answered it at the bottom.
Yeah. One is about superintendent's requirements, but what we're talking about here are accountability, the accountability pieces that we have to put in place per federal guidance in order to account for accountability. So you're talking about two separate things. One, I understand that principals may be concerned about, well, they are, but what I, we can, it's two separate conversations. One is the principal's requirements to become a superintendent, that's there. And then the other is we have to account for banked scores for our high schools, and that's a totally different conversation. So I don't know that we can link them because we have to make sure that the federal government is getting, and our communities are getting an accurate result, a reliable result of what has happened to student achievement in the state of Mississippi because of the pandemic. And the only way we can do that, and so say the feds as well, because we've been talking with them on a regular basis, is to run our model as tight to our, how we have it defined as we can, and to not use as much pre-pandemic information as we possibly can so that we're providing an accurate result of what Mississippi looks like post-pandemic. That's our goal. And so that's why I'm saying, these are two separate conversations. This conversation today was strictly about what I just talked about, which is around how do we account in our business rules for missing data? Bottom line, that's the bottom line. And then run our accountability model and see what that looks like against the other. Now, that's the reason APA is open. So if somebody else has got another idea out there, then that's exactly why we've got the accountability open. But I think some people are also confusing what we are allowed to do and what we are not allowed to do. Just like Dr. Vanderford said, we've had people say, well, just don't give us A through F this year. No, that's state law. That's required by state law. Well, how about if we just don't count any of these banked scores? No, the federal government has said we have to account for everybody. Somebody else had said, well, how about you average the higher of the two scores? And the federal government has said, no, you're not allowed to do that. So anytime ideas have come in, we've had to check with the feds to see what's allowed. We've had to go back into state law and federal law to see what's allowed. So what's being proposed based on the information that we have and based on our consultation with our Technical Advisory Committee and the Center for Assessment are within the federal guidelines of what is allowable. Now, if somebody else, that's the whole purpose of APA, if somebody else has got another idea that fits within those guidelines, to Dr. Bass's point, we're willing to receive it and take a look at it. But it's got to be equitable, it's got to be fair, it's got to be psychometrically sound, and it's got to be evidence-based. It can't just be, I think this is a good idea because I think this is a good idea.
I understand. At the same time, I would like for us to be open to look at the data and see what it's telling us about group performance and also individual performance going forward and see how does that impact, you know, the trailing employment issues that we're going to have because we've got it tied to that performance, if that makes sense.
And I said, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that those are two totally separate conversations.
Go ahead.
But also, you know, I'm really concerned, you know, about the different types and amount of instruction that we've had over the last two years. So we will get some data on that so we can evaluate that data too, correct?
Well, I think, no, we're not collecting the data based on mode. It's strictly based on performance, and that's, you know, that's all we can go on because there is no way that we can reliably, over 146, 147 districts and charter schools, collect accurate data on the mode of delivery. So what, and I can tell you that as a state, we're probably well over 95% in person since the beginning of the year. Now, there may have been, right, but that's my point. So what we've got to measure it is how do we do this year? And that's the whole point of making these rules and these rule changes so that we have an accurate measure of what happened across the state in the 2122 school year. That's the whole purpose of this.
To Dr. Vanderford's point, however, and to Dr. McGee's point, which is a separate conversation, you feel, this is a statement and a question, you feel that there is flexibility in the requirements for superintendents.
So that requirement is in state law.
Yeah.
And in part of that requirement, there is a section that allows the state board to promulgate rules for alternate qualifications. So I was just saying that that's there, and at a later time, we could take a look at that. We would certainly have to consult with our legal team because I don't need to be the one interpreting the law and the board's flexibility of that law. But just off the top of my head, I mean, I just thought that might be one area to address that latter part of Dr. McGee's points, our question.
I definitely think we need to get this out for APA. Listen to the comments from the trenches, so to speak. The only comment I'll make is, is I agree totally, Dr. Vanderford, about we don't want to mask anything, we don't want to mask any negatives, and we don't want to mask any positives that may come from this year's scores that affect us in the future. So let's get it out for APA, and let's find out what's going on out there.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Then do I have a motion to approve item five that we begin the APA process related to the accountability, statewide accountability model?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vanderford, and Alan, we appreciate that. We'll move into item six, which is the number of contracts. Dr. Gavin?
Yes, good morning. Unlike last month, we don't have as many items coming before you today with, for contract approvals. We have three items coming to you this morning for approval. The first item is a contract with our interim superintendent of Tunica County, and that is for Dr. Marjorie Pulley. The second item, the next two items are renewals, the action item six B is a renewal of our contract with Mr. Michael Kent. And you have the backup, of course, behind each of these tabs. And then the last item coming before you for approval this morning is to renew our contract with Hanover Research Council.
Any questions on these? Then do I have a motion that we approve item 6A, 6B, and 6C? We'll take those in one motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Okay, we have the motion and a second. Any questions on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Dr. Gavin?
Yes, we have one grant that we're bringing forth for modification, and it is a grant modification to the University of Mississippi Medical Center for Behavioral Telehealth. We're asking for a modification to increase that amount for adequate services to cover our students in the district as it relates to mental health and behavioral health.
Comments on this, or questions about this one? Have a question? No, okay. Okay. Glad I'm not the only one today. Okay. Item seven A, do we have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gavin. Our next item is social studies update from Dr. Benton and Mr. Goff and Mr. Kent. If you talk through that whole binder you have, we may not leave today.
I'm in the classroom too.
Bring all your information, huh?
That's right.
Okay, Dr. Benton?
Yes, ma'am. Alrighty, this morning, Mr. Joe Goff, Mike Kent, and I want to provide the board with an update on the social studies review process. And I want to begin by sharing some information with you about the APA process. As you will recall, on December the 16th, the academic office came for you requesting permission from the board to begin the APA. It was actually part of our consent agenda. And the public, and the intent was to begin the public comment period for the Mississippi College and Career Social Studies readiness standards. The item was one of seven items on that agenda, the consent agenda, for APA items to open. And bringing APA items in December, that's not new. In fact, in December of 2020, we brought forward eight items, one of which was multiple curriculum frameworks from the Office of CTE. The MDE, all of our program offices, we present items to the state board depending on the progression of the work. We don't have designated months that we bring forward items as they relate to APA, it just moves with the flow of the work. With that said, the APA process is, you've heard several times presented today, it's designed to open up and allow a broad spectrum representative across our state for public comment. It's the opportunity to maximize engagement of both educational community stakeholders, educational community, and the community writ large. So, in the case of the social study standards, the APA process worked just as it was intended. The original APA posting for the standards garnered 261 comments for a hearing. 261 individuals requested either in a form letter or just a short email that they would want us to open up and have a public hearing. And with that, Mr. Goff is going to explain to you the process that we used through, to set up, and then execute the public hearing.
Good morning. So, according to the Administrative Procedures Act and Rule 4.2 of this board's rules, an oral public comment hearing is required if we receive more than, or at least 10 requests for such a hearing. So, after we had received the requisite number of requests for the hearing, the agency refiled with the Secretary of State's office the APA notice, and we scheduled the public comment hearing then for Friday, January the 28th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. And in the notice that was filed with the Secretary of State's office, the public notice, we stated that the hearing would take place at the Mississippi Agriculture Museum, the Sparkman Auditorium, at 11:50 Lakeland Drive here in Jackson, and that the hearing would take place from 9:00 a.m. on Friday the 28th until noon. We posted the notice of hearing also on the MDE website with a link to the proposed social study standards. We issued a statewide press release also that day with the hearing notice, and it also contained a link, again, to the proposed standards. And the MDE also posted, as required, a notice of public comment hearing in the January 11th, 2022 edition of the Clarion ledger. MDE also sent the notice by email and by hard copy to folks who had sent their requests in by hard copy mail. But we sent the notice by email or hard copy mail to each person who had sent a request to us for the public comment hearing, notifying them of the, of the hearing that would take place on January the 28th. And also, consistent with Administrative Procedures Act rules, we created a speaker registration process. It was, we created a link for people to register if they wanted to speak at the public comment hearing. We ensured that it was very user-friendly. The link, we included that registration link on our website, we included it also on our statewide press release, we included information about the registration link in the Clarion ledger notice, and we also included a link to the registration in every email that we responded to of the, all of the folks that asked for the public comment hearing. And again, our registration link, it was, it was very user-friendly. We asked for folks who wanted to speak to give us their name, to state what organization, if any, or persons that they represented, that when they intend to speak. And we also asked that they state what specific social study standards they intended to address at the hearing. Consistent with APA rules, we established a deadline for people to register, three days before the hearing was to take place. Our deadline was 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, January the 25th, for people to register, three days before the hearing. And we had 66 people register to speak at the hearing on Friday the 28th. On the afternoon of January the 25th, the day of the deadline of registration, we sent confirmation to everybody that had preregistered. They were, they were, their registration was confirmed, and we informed them of the procedures that we intended to implement during the hearing. We let them know that the hearing would start promptly at 9:00 a.m., the hearing was open to the public, the speakers would be called in alphabetical order, and that each speaker would have three minutes to speak. We also let them know that there would be a transcript of the hearing that would be documented, and we provided that to the board. And we let them know that we would not be taking questions at the public comment hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear from the, the people that register that want to speak on the standards. And we let them know also that we would have a sign language interpreter that would be available if necessary. We notified them also, in that communication on January the 25th, that MDE had made the decision that the content examples in the standards that had previously been identified to be moved to a separate instructional planning guide, we let them know that we were making the decision to include those. Once again, they would be retained in our social study standards in addition to being in that separate instructional planning guide. Many of the speakers that registered had stated that they wanted to speak about the content examples issue, and so, we, we gave them notice on the, on the front end, as they prepared for their comments. The hearing began promptly Friday the 28th at 9:00 a.m., with me going to the podium, and I reviewed the procedures for the hearing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kent. Mike Kent was the state superintendent, is designated to preside as the hearing officer over the public comment hearing. He's going to summarize for you the proceedings and talk about the proposed process going forward.
Good morning, board. The, the membership of the board has changed somewhat since I last appeared before you, but since you approved my contract, I'm assuming I still have some degree of credibility in, in spite of Dr. McGee and, and Mr. East, so.
A little bit of credibility.
Yeah. Well, actually, I thought about letting you do this presentation, Dr. McGee, since all I'd have to do is reference you back to some of those bond issue hearings we had back in the day, and I thought you could probably take the ball and run with it from there. Before, before I get into the report on the, on the hearing, I want to issue a personal thank you to the staff here at MDE, who did such an outstanding job of creating an atmosphere of competence and professionalism at the public hearing. This tone that, that they created before we ever got started, gave us a chance to get off to a good start. And so, what could have been a chaotic situation was managed in a way that reflected a positive light on this agency, on the state agency, and on the State Board of Education as well. So, I just want to say thank you to all of you that did that. I was just the guy with the gavel. These two stacks of paper represent the feedback that MDE has received through the APA process. This larger pile represents written comments, and this, of course, is the court reporter's transcript of the public hearing. Quick comment on the transcript. While I think it's accurate, I would also describe it as a very sterile document, in the sense that it does not note the numerous incidents of unsolicited raucous responses, both positive and negative, from the audience. The transcript also has no notations for the frequent use of the gavel to bring speakers to conclusion or to restore order to the room. I'm going to use two words to describe the hearing. First of all, emotion. The hearing was, was packed with emotion. My impression was that everyone in attendance had arrived with a great deal of passion about their topic of choice. And the more speakers we worked through, the more topics we had to be passionate about. Everybody had, had an opinion about every topic. I think it speaks volumes that we started the hearing with about 300 people in the room. Three hours and 40 minutes later, we still had over 300 people in the room. No one left. I can best describe it as high drama. The second descriptor that I would use is diversity. Not just in the traditional sense of race or gender, but diverse in the nature of the topics that were brought forth. And, and probably more importantly than all of that, diversity in the speakers' perspectives of this entire process. They, they had very different perspectives of how it occurred, how it went down, where it was going, et cetera, et cetera. Let me give you a quick rundown of some of the organizations with whom the speakers identified. We had asked them if they would to identify any organizations, and some did and some didn't. But here's a quick list of, of some of the ones that were identified. The City of Laurel and the Jones County Black History Museum, American Association of University Women, Jackson Branch of the NAACP, Kapai and Jefferson County Regional Library, Mississippi Human Services Coalition, Mississippi Freedom Caucus, American Federation of Teachers, Mississippi Chapter of Black Lives Matter, Mississippi Rising Coalition, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Hansbrough City Civics Group of Mississippi, the Brian Flowers for Congress Campaign, Mississippi Valley State University, Black Law Students Association, Mississippi Poor People's Campaign, three members of the Mississippi Legislature, both parties represented, by the way, both major parties represented, American Federation of Labor, the Sikh Coalition, Mississippi Center for Justice, and the Mississippi Civics Project. I hope that gives you an idea of the, the many different viewpoints that were represented in the room. Quickly, let me address this stack of written comments. As you can see, there's, there's a significant volume of, of comments there. Dr. Benton and her team have been poring through this, and to a great extent, this is at least categorized into some major piles. We, we've gotten that far. I, I think the good news is that during that process, Dr. Benton chirped up and said, well, I think I chirped up first and, and said, well, good grief, what a pile of stuff. And she said, oh, that's nothing. We had 8,000 comments in 2016 with the English and Language Arts revisions. So, the good news is that your team has been there and done that. They, they brought the ELA revisions to a successful conclusion. My point, and I'll conclude, is that the APA process, I don't know if it requires or suggests that, that the hearing officer have a recommendation. My recommendation is that you put this in the, Dr. Benton's court, give your staff time to work through it, categorize it, evaluate it, decide what is actionable, what is not actionable, and then let her bring a plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for this information, and we appreciate the work that you all did. I had great confidence that you could keep this emotional raucous group under control and be able to move this process forward. Just for the record, the board has received the transcript of the court reporter, and we, I think most of us have read every word of it, and, or maybe all of us, but some of us have discussed it. And, you know, just to reiterate on my part, having been through this process before, there is absolutely nothing covert, there is nothing hidden in this process, everything is open, transparent, and the public certainly has a right to have an opinion and to express their opinion, and that's what this is about. And so, we will take your recommendation and let Dr. Benton and her office work through all this with your help, and bring back recommendations to this board at some point. Any questions or comments, Mr. Miller?
One to the three, I'll thank you for wading through this. Dr. Benton, if you could tell us what's next, sort of summarize where we go from here.
Okay. Well, our thing, this is, this is our thinking, that we, we will build on the model that we used in 2015, 16, with our ELA and mathematics pieces, where we brought in teachers from across the state, and we, we have our feedback. We, as he said, we've already started sorting that. Some of it is actionable, some of it's not. So, for example, if you say, I don't like the standards, that's not actionable. If you say, we need to insert historical figures' names in a, in a standard, that is something that's actionable. But our, our thoughts are to bring in the group of social studies teachers across the grade bands and the content areas, and let them work alongside us with the recommendations that were received in the public comment period. Then, to make those changes that we feel like are, that strengthen the standards, and then, if not, just like you see traditionally in the backup, where we'll have our recommendation, and then what we change, and then the rationale behind either changing it or not, we'd bring that, that forward to you. We could also, depending on the changes, if they are substantive, open another APA process. Again, we, we had a process that was very successful in 2015, 16, where we had our, it virtually, online portal set up, where you would enter your standards, and people could respond to specific standards. Each standard was listed. And as, as Mr. Kent said, and Dr. Wright had stated before, over 8,000 comments were received. So, we just, it'll give people another opportunity to weigh in if we make any changes that would legally be defined as substantive. And then, we'll bring it back to you for consideration. The implementation period would follow then, once the items are approved, an item is approved. Generally, we give ourselves about a year for implementation. We spend the next year training, supporting educators, and making sure that they feel real comfortable and competent in the standards. And I hope I've addressed your question, Mr. Miller.
You have. Thank you.
Just to go back.
Yes, ma'am.
And because the live stream, some people may not know.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us how this all, how this was initiated. Why are we doing this anyway, the group that you had of teachers?
Why, why did we look at the 2018 social study standards? Actually, it was Why did we look at the 2018 Social Studies standards? Actually, it was teachers that requested that we look at our standards and make these, the proposed revisions that were brought forward. We had the group convene to work on the instructional guide that would be complementary to the piece, and in that process, they discovered there were some things that perhaps were misplaced chronologically in the year. That's one example. The Vietnam War was one that needed to be inserted in a visible way back in a standard, and it was the teachers that said, "Hey, we need to take a look at these."
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Did anybody have anything? Go ahead.
I'll just raise, I'm trying to figure out the best way to say it, but that, like the reading and the math standards, there was sort of like, and I followed the process in 2015 like very closely, there was like a model set of standards to like start from. And I think social studies is very different in that every state thinks there's different things that, you know, students should know from their state, and I wonder like just how you are thinking about those differences. Because I think like reading and math, there's a lot of agreement among, you know, what should be taught in kindergarten, first grade, you know, and therefore, but in social studies, there's just such diverse viewpoints about that, and I wonder if that difference can just have us spinning the wheels in like going back and forth.
We don't think so, Dr. Bass. We have looked at other states, and actually, there's a lot of commonality. There are some differences in that you have a state-specific course.
Yeah.
Like we have a Mississippi Studies, and please, Ms. Clemmons, if you jump in, she happens to be a social studies major too, so that's great to have the secondary person that leads that work. But there are some specific state courses, and there may be examples and projects that would relate to specific areas within a state, maybe it's geographically or so forth. But then there are a lot of common things. For example, as I was looking this morning, there were standards around mapping. Well, that's pretty consistent, you know, looking at a map, interpreting a legend, that's pretty much going to stay the same. The same thing in economics, but your industries may differ depending on your community. So thank you for raising that, though, and that is something that we will definitely keep in mind as we move forward. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. We appreciate the work you've done on this. We'll be interested as you move forward.
Thank you.
We're now to the consent agenda. We have items A through I. Are there any questions on any of these before we call for a motion? I'll entertain a motion then that we approve item nine, the consent agenda, all items A through I. We have a motion. We've got Mr. Jacobs. We have a second. Okay, let's wake up and finish this. Barrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Any opposed? All right. We now need to move toward the consideration of an executive session.
I move that the board consider making a close determination of the need to go into executive session.
Okay. We do have a motion. Mr. Miller seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. We had asked that, who do you need to say?
The only person that I need, let's see.
The State Board of Education has voted unanimously to go into executive session in accordance with Mississippi Code annotated to Section 2541.7 for A and K to discuss discrete personnel matters related to the approval of appointments to certain positions and/or approval of the salaries of certain positions within the Department of Education, the Knoxsby District of Transformation, Mississippi School for the Arts, Mississippi Schools for the Deaf and Blind, and Mississippi School for Mathematics and Science.[160.18][160.21](end of transcript)[162.21][162.24](end of transcript)[164.24][164.27](end of transcript)[166.27][166.30](end of transcript)[168.30][168.33](end of transcript)[170.33][170.36](end of transcript)[172.36][172.39](end of transcript)[174.39][174.42](end of transcript)[176.42][176.45](end of transcript)[178.45][178.48](end of transcript)[180.48][180.51](end of transcript)[182.51][182.54](end of transcript)[184.54][184.57](end of transcript)[186.57][186.60](end of transcript)[188.60][188.63](end of transcript)[190.63][190.66](end of transcript)[192.66][192.69](end of transcript)[194.69][194.72](end of transcript)[196.72][196.75](end of transcript)[198.75][198.78](end of transcript)[200.78][200.81](end of transcript)[202.81][202.84](end of transcript)[204.84][204.87](end of transcript)[206.87][206.90](end of transcript)[208.90][208.93](end of transcript)[210.93][210.96](end of transcript)[212.96][212.99](end of transcript)[214.99][215.02](end of transcript)[217.02][217.05](end of transcript)[219.05][219.08](end of transcript)[221.08][221.11](end of transcript)[223.11][223.14](end of transcript)[225.14][225.17](end of transcript)[227.17][227.20](end of transcript)[229.20][229.23](end of transcript)[231.23][231.26](end of transcript)[233.26][233.29](end of transcript)[235.29][235.32](end of transcript)[237.32][237.35](end of transcript)[239.35][239.38](end of transcript)[241.38][241.41](end of transcript)[243.41][243.44](end of transcript)[245.44][245.47](end of transcript)[247.47][247.50](end of transcript)[249.50][249.53](end of transcript)[251.53][251.56](end of transcript)[253.56][253.59](end of transcript)[255.59][255.62](end of transcript)[257.62][257.64](end of transcript)[259.64][259.67](end of transcript)[261.67][261.70](end of transcript)[263.70][263.73](end of transcript)[265.73][265.76](end of transcript)[267.76][267.79](end of transcript)[269.79][269.82](end of transcript)[271.82][271.85](end of transcript)[273.85][273.88](end of transcript)[275.88][275.91](end of transcript)[277.91][277.94](end of transcript)[279.94][279.97](end of transcript)[281.97][281.99](end of transcript)[283.99][284.02](end of transcript)[286.02][286.05](end of transcript)[288.05][288.08](end of transcript)[290.08][290.11](end of transcript)[292.11][292.14](end of transcript)[294.14][294.17](end of transcript)[296.17][296.20](end of transcript)[298.20][298.23](end of transcript)[300.23][300.26](end of transcript)[302.26][302.29](end of transcript)[304.29][304.32](end of transcript)[306.32][306.35](end of transcript)[308.35][308.38](end of transcript)[310.38][310.41](end of transcript)[312.41][312.44](end of transcript)[314.44][314.47](end of transcript)[316.47][316.50](end of transcript)[318.50][318.53](end of transcript)[320.53][320.56](end of transcript)[322.56][322.59](end of transcript)[324.59][324.62](end of transcript)[326.62][326.65](end of transcript)[328.65][328.68](end of transcript)[330.68][330.71](end of transcript)[332.71][332.74](end of transcript)[334.74][334.77](end of transcript)[336.77][336.80](end of transcript)[338.80][338.83](end of transcript)[340.83][340.86](end of transcript)[342.86][342.89](end of transcript)[344.89][344.92](end of transcript)[346.92][346.95](end of transcript)[348.95][348.98](end of transcript)[350.98][351.01](end of transcript)[353.01][353.04](end of transcript)[355.04][355.07](end of transcript)[357.07][357.10](end of transcript)[359.10][359.13](end of transcript)[361.13][361.16](end of transcript)[363.16][363.19](end of transcript)[365.19][365.22](end of transcript)[367.22][367.25](end of transcript)[369.25][369.28](end of transcript)[371.28][371.31](end of transcript)[373.31][373.34](end of transcript)[375.34][375.37](end of transcript)[377.37][377.40](end of transcript)[379.40][379.43](end of transcript)[381.43][381.46](end of transcript)[383.46][383.49](end of transcript)[385.49][385.52](end of transcript)[387.52][387.55](end of transcript)[389.55][389.58](end of transcript)[391.58][391.61](end of transcript)[393.61][393.64](end of transcript)[395.64][395.67](end of transcript)[397.67][397.70](end of transcript)[399.70][399.73](end of transcript)[401.73][401.76](end of transcript)[403.76][403.79](end of transcript)[405.79][405.82](end of transcript)[407.82][407.85](end of transcript)[409.85][409.88](end of transcript)[411.88][411.91](end of transcript)[413.91][413.94](end of transcript)[415.94][415.97](end of transcript)[417.97][417.99](end of transcript)[419.99][420.02](end of transcript)[422.02][422.05](end of transcript)[424.05][424.08](end of transcript)[426.08][426.11](end of transcript)[428.11][428.14](end of transcript)[430.14][430.17](end of transcript)[432.17][432.20](end of transcript)[434.20][434.23](end of transcript)[436.23][436.26](end of transcript)[438.26][438.29](end of transcript)[440.29][440.32](end of transcript)[442.32][442.35](end of transcript)[444.35][444.38](end of transcript)[446.38][446.41](end of transcript)[448.41][448.44](end of transcript)[450.44][450.47](end of transcript)[452.47][452.50](end of transcript)[454.50][454.53](end of transcript)[456.53][456.56](end of transcript)[458.56][458.59](end of transcript)[460.59][460.62](end of transcript)[462.62][462.65](end of transcript)[464.65][464.68](end of transcript)[466.68][466.71](end of transcript)[468.71][468.74](end of transcript)[470.74][470.77](end of transcript)[472.77][472.80](end of transcript)[474.80][474.83](end of transcript)[476.83][476.86](end of transcript)[478.86][478.89](end of transcript)[480.89][480.92](end of transcript)[482.92][482.95](end of transcript)[484.95][484.98](end of transcript)[486.98][487.01](end of transcript)[489.01][489.04](end of transcript)[491.04][491.07](end of transcript)[493.07][493.10](end of transcript)[495.10][495.13](end of transcript)[497.13][497.16](end of transcript)[499.16][499.19](end of transcript)[501.19][501.22](end of transcript)[503.22][503.25](end of transcript)[505.25][505.28](end of transcript)[507.28][507.31](end of transcript)[509.31][509.34](end of transcript)[511.34][511.37](end of transcript)[513.37][513.40](end of transcript)[515.40][515.42](end of transcript)[517.42][517.45](end of transcript)[519.45][519.48](end of transcript)[521.48][521.51](end of transcript)[523.51][523.54](end of transcript)[525.54][525.57](end of transcript)[527.57][527.60](end of transcript)[529.60][529.63](end of transcript)[531.63][531.66](end of transcript)[533.66][533.69](end of transcript)[535.69][535.72](end of transcript)[537.72][537.75](end of transcript)[539.75][539.78](end of transcript)[541.78][541.81](end of transcript)[543.81][543.84](end of transcript)[545.84][545.87](end of transcript)[547.87][547.90](end of transcript)[549.90][549.92](end of transcript)[551.92][551.95](end of transcript)[553.95][553.98](end of transcript)[555.98][556.01](end of transcript)[558.01][558.04](end of transcript)[560.04][560.07](end of transcript)[562.07][562.10](end of transcript)[564.10][564.13](end of transcript)[566.13][566.16](end of transcript)[568.16][568.19](end of transcript)[570.19][570.22](end of transcript)[572.22][572.25](end of transcript)[574.25][574.28](end of transcript)[576.28][576.31](end of transcript)[578.31][578.34](end of transcript)[580.34][580.37](end of transcript)[582.37][582.40](end of transcript)[584.40][584.42](end of transcript)[586.42][586.45](end of transcript)[588.45][588.48](end of transcript)[590.48][590.51](end of transcript)[592.51][592.54](end of transcript)[594.54][594.57](end of transcript)[596.57][596.60](end of transcript)[598.60][598.63](end of transcript)[600.63][600.66](end of transcript)[602.66][602.69](end of transcript)[604.69][604.72](end of transcript)[606.72][606.75](end of transcript)[608.75][608.78](end of transcript)[610.78][610.81](end of transcript)[612.81][612.84](end of transcript)[614.84][614.87](end of transcript)[616.87][616.90](end of transcript)[618.90][618.92](end of transcript)[620.92][620.95](end of transcript)[622.95][622.98](end of transcript)[624.98][625.01](end of transcript)[627.01][627.04](end of transcript)[629.04][629.07](end of transcript)[631.07][631.10](end of transcript)[633.10][633.13](end of transcript)[635.13][635.16](end of transcript)[637.16][637.19](end of transcript)[639.19][639.22](end of transcript)[641.22][641.25](end of transcript)[643.25][643.28](end of transcript)[645.28][645.31](end of transcript)[647.31][647.34](end of transcript)[649.34][649.37](end of transcript)[651.37][651.40](end of transcript)[653.40][653.43](end of transcript)[655.43][655.46](end of transcript)[657.46][657.49](end of transcript)[659.49][659.52](end of transcript)[661.52][661.55](end of transcript)[663.55][663.58](end of transcript)[665.58][665.61](end of transcript)[667.61][667.64](end of transcript)[669.64][669.67](end of transcript)[671.67][671.70](end of transcript)[673.70][673.73](end of transcript)[675.73][675.76](end of transcript)[677.76][677.79](end of transcript)[679.79][679.82](end of transcript)[681.82][681.85](end of transcript)[683.85][683.88](end of transcript)[685.88][685.91](end of transcript)[687.91][687.94](end of transcript)[689.94][689.97](end of transcript)[691.97][691.99](end of transcript)[693.99][694.02](end of transcript)[696.02][696.05](end of transcript)[698.05][698.08](end of transcript)[700.08][700.11](end of transcript)[702.11][702.14](end of transcript)[704.14][704.17](end of transcript)[706.17][706.20](end of transcript)[708.20][708.23](end of transcript)[710.23][710.26](end of transcript)[712.26][712.29](end of transcript)[714.29][714.32](end of transcript)[716.32][716.35](end of transcript)[718.35][718.38](end of transcript)[720.38][720.41](end of transcript)[722.41][722.44](end of transcript)[724.44][724.47](end of transcript)[726.47][726.50](end of transcript)[728.50][728.53](end of transcript)[730.53][730.56](end of transcript)[732.56][732.59](end of transcript)[734.59][734.62](end of transcript)[736.62][736.65](end of transcript)[738.65][738.68](end of transcript)[740.68][740.71](end of transcript)[742.71][742.74](end of transcript)[744.74][744.77](end of transcript)[746.77][746.80](end of transcript)[748.80][748.83](end of transcript)[750.83][750.86](end of transcript)[752.86][752.89](end of transcript)[754.89][754.92](end of transcript)[756.92][756.95](end of transcript)[758.95][758.98](end of transcript)[760.98][761.01](end of transcript)[763.01][763.04](end of transcript)[765.04][765.07](end of transcript)[767.07][767.10](end of transcript)[769.10][769.13](end of transcript)[771.13][771.16](end of transcript)[773.16][773.19](end of transcript)[775.19][775.22](end of transcript)[777.22][777.25](end of transcript)[779.25][779.28](end of transcript)[781.28][781.31](end of transcript)[783.31][783.34](end of transcript)[785.34][785.37](end of transcript)[787.37][787.40](end of transcript)[789.40][789.43](end of transcript)[791.43][791.46](end of transcript)[793.46][793.49](end of transcript)[795.49][795.52](end of transcript)[797.52][797.55](end of transcript)[799.55][799.58](end of transcript)[801.58][801.61](end of transcript)[803.61][803.64](end of transcript)[805.64][805.67](end of transcript)[807.67][807.70](end of transcript)[809.70][809.73](end of transcript)[811.73][811.76](end of transcript)[813.76][813.79](end of transcript)[815.79][815.82](end of transcript)[817.82][817.85](end of transcript)[819.85][819.88](end of transcript)[821.88][821.91](end of transcript)[823.91][823.94](end of transcript)[825.94][825.97](end of transcript)[827.97][828.00](end of transcript)[830.00][830.03](end of transcript)[832.03][832.06](end of transcript)[834.06][834.09](end of transcript)[836.09][836.12](end of transcript)[838.12][838.15](end of transcript)[840.15][840.18](end of transcript)[842.18][842.21](end of transcript)[844.21][844.24](end of transcript)[846.24][846.27](end of transcript)[848.27][848.30](end of transcript)[850.30][850.33](end of transcript)[852.33][852.36](end of transcript)[854.36][854.39](end of transcript)[856.39][856.42](end of transcript)[858.42][858.45](end of transcript)[860.45][860.48](end of transcript)[862.48][862.51](end of transcript)[864.51][864.54](end of transcript)[866.54][866.57](end of transcript)[868.57][868.60](end of transcript)[870.60][870.63](end of transcript)[872.63][872.66](end of transcript)[874.66][874.69](end of transcript)[876.69][876.72](end of transcript)[878.72][878.75](end of transcript)[880.75][880.78](end of transcript)[882.78][882.81](end of transcript)[884.81][884.84](end of transcript)[886.84][886.87](end of transcript)[888.87][888.90](end of transcript)[890.90][890.93](end of transcript)[892.93][892.96](end of transcript)[894.96][894.99](end of transcript)[896.99][897.02](end of transcript)[899.02][899.05](end of transcript)[901.05][901.08](end of transcript)[903.08][903.11](end of transcript)[905.11][905.14](end of transcript)[907.14][907.17](end of transcript)[909.17][909.20](end of transcript)[911.20][911.23](end of transcript)[913.23][913.26](end of transcript)[915.26][915.29](end of transcript)[917.29][917.32](end of transcript)[919.32][919.35](end of transcript)[921.35][921.38](end of transcript)[923.38][923.41](end of transcript)[925.41][925.44](end of transcript)[927.44][927.47](end of transcript)[929.47][929.50](end of transcript)[931.50][931.53](end of transcript)[933.53][933.56](end of transcript)[935.56][935.59](end of transcript)[937.59][937.62](end of transcript)[939.62][939.65](end of transcript)[941.65][941.68](end of transcript)[943.68][943.71](end of transcript)[945.71][945.74](end of transcript)[947.74][947.77](end of transcript)[949.77][949.80](end of transcript)[951.80][951.83](end of transcript)[953.83][953.86](end of transcript)[955.86][955.89](end of transcript)[957.89][957.92](end of transcript)[959.92][959.95](end of transcript)[961.95][961.98](end of transcript)[963.98][964.01](end of transcript)[966.01][966.04](end of transcript)[968.04][968.07](end of transcript)[970.07][970.10](end of transcript)[972.10][972.13](end of transcript)[974.13][974.16](end of transcript)[976.16][976.19](end of transcript)[978.19][978.22](end of transcript)[980.22][980.25](end of transcript)[982.25][982.28](end of transcript)[984.28][984.31](end of transcript)[986.31][986.34](end of transcript)[988.34][988.37](end of transcript)[990.37][990.40](end of transcript)[992.40][992.43](end of transcript)[994.43][994.46](end of transcript)[996.46][996.49](end of transcript)[998.49][998.52](end of transcript)[1000.52][1000.55](end of transcript)[1002.55][1002.58](end of transcript)[1004.58][1004.61](end of transcript)[1006.61][1006.64](end of transcript)[1008.64][1008.67](end of transcript)[1010.67][1010.70](end of transcript)[1012.70][1012.73](end of transcript)[1014.73][1014.76](end of transcript)[1016.76][1016.79](end of transcript)[1018.79][1018.82](end of transcript)[1020.82][1020.85](end of transcript)[1022.85][1022.88](end of transcript)[1024.88][1024.91](end of transcript)[1026.91][1026.94](end of transcript)[1028.94][1028.97](end of transcript)[1030.97][1030.99](end of transcript)[1032.99][1033.02](end of transcript)[1035.02][1035.05](end of transcript)[1037.05][1037.08](end of transcript)[1039.08][1039.11](end of transcript)[1041.11][1041.14](end of transcript)[1043.14][1043.17](end of transcript)[1045.17][1045.20](end of transcript)[1047.20][1047.23](end of transcript)[1049.23][1049.26](end of transcript)[1051.26][1051.29](end of transcript)[1053.29][1053.32](end of transcript)[1055.32][1055.35](end of transcript)[1057.35][1057.38](end of transcript)[1059.38][1059.41](end of transcript)[1061.41][1061.44](end of transcript)[1063.44][1063.47](end of transcript)[1065.47][1065.50](end of transcript)[1067.50][1067.53](end of transcript)[1069.53][1069.56](end of transcript)[1071.56][1071.59](end of transcript)[1073.59][1073.63](end of transcript)[1075.63][1075.66](end of transcript)[1077.66][1077.69](end of transcript)[1079.69][1079.72](end of transcript)[1081.72][1081.75](end of transcript)[1083.75][1083.78](end of transcript)[1085.78][1085.81](end of transcript)[1087.81][1087.84](end of transcript)[1089.84][1089.87](end of transcript)[1091.87][1091.90](end of transcript)[1093.90][1093.93](end of transcript)[1095.93][1095.96](end of transcript)[1097.96][1097.99](end of transcript)[1099.99][1099.99](end of transcript)[1101.99][1102.02](end of transcript)[1104.02][1104.05](end of transcript)[1106.05][1106.08](end of transcript)[1108.08][1108.11](end of transcript)[1110.11][1110.14](end of transcript)[1112.14][1112.17](end of transcript)[1114.17][1114.20](end of transcript)[1116.20][1116.23](end of transcript)[1118.23][1118.26](end of transcript)[1120.26][1120.29](end of transcript)[1122.29][1122.32](end of transcript)[1124.32][1124.35](end of transcript)[1126.35][1126.38](end of transcript)[1128.38][1128.41](end of transcript)[1130.41][1130.44](end of transcript)[1132.44][1132.47](end of transcript)[1134.47][1134.50](end of transcript)[1136.50][1136.53](end of transcript)[1138.53][1138.56](end of transcript)[1140.56][1140.59](end of transcript)[1142.59][1142.63](end of transcript)[1144.63][1144.66](end of transcript)[1146.66][1146.69](end of transcript)[1148.69][1148.72](end of transcript)[1150.72][1150.75](end of transcript)[1152.75][1152.78](end of transcript)[1154.78][1154.81](end of transcript)[1156.81][1156.84](end of transcript)[1158.84][1158.87](end of transcript)[1160.87][1160.90](end of transcript)[1162.90][1162.93](end of transcript)[1164.93][1164.96](end of transcript)[1166.96][1166.99](end of transcript)[1168.99][1169.02](end of transcript)[1171.02][1171.05](end of transcript)[1173.05][1173.08](end of transcript)[1175.08][1175.11](end of transcript)[1177.11][1177.14](end of transcript)[1179.14][1179.17](end of transcript)[1181.17][1181.20](end of transcript)[1183.20][1183.23](end of transcript)[1185.23][1185.26](end of transcript)[1187.26][1187.29](end of transcript)[1189.29][1189.32](end of transcript)[1191.32][1191.35](end of transcript)[1193.35][1193.38](end of transcript)[1195.38][1195.41](end of transcript)[1197.41][1197.44](end of transcript)[1199.44][1199.47](end of transcript)[1201.47][1201.50](end of transcript)[1203.50][1203.53](end of transcript)[1205.53][1205.56](end of transcript)[1207.56][1207.59](end of transcript)[1209.59][1209.62](end of transcript)[1211.62][1211.65](end of transcript)[1213.65][1213.68](end of transcript)[1215.68][1215.71](end of transcript)[1217.71][1217.74](end of transcript)[1219.74][1219.77](end of transcript)[1221.77][1221.80](end of transcript)[1223.80][1223.83](end of transcript)[1225.83][1225.86](end of transcript)[1227.86][1227.89](end of transcript)[1229.89][1229.92](end of transcript)[1231.92][1231.95](end of transcript)[1233.95][1233.98](end of transcript)[1235.98][1236.01](end of transcript)[1238.01][1238.04](end of transcript)[1240.04][1240.07](end of transcript)[1242.07][1242.10](end of transcript)[1244.10][1244.13](end of transcript)[1246.13][1246.16](end of transcript)[1248.16][1248.19](end of transcript)[1250.19][1250.22](end of transcript)[1252.22][1252.25](end of transcript)[1254.25][1254.28](end of transcript)[1256.28][1256.31](end of transcript)[1258.31][1258.34](end of transcript)[1260.34][1260.37](end of transcript)[1262.37][1262.40](end of transcript)[1264.40][1264.43](end of transcript)[1266.43][1266.46](end of transcript)[1268.46][1268.49](end of transcript)[1270.49][1270.52](end of transcript)[1272.52][1272.55](end of transcript)[1274.55][1274.58](end of transcript)[1276.58][1276.61](end of transcript)[1278.61][1278.64](end of transcript)[1280.64][1280.67](end of transcript)[1282.67][1282.70](end of transcript)[1284.70][1284.73](end of transcript)[1286.73][1286.76](end of transcript)[1288.76][1288.79](end of transcript)[1290.79][1290.82](end of transcript)[1292.82][1292.85](end of transcript)[1294.85][1294.88](end of transcript)[1296.88][1296.91](end of transcript)[1298.91][1298.94](end of transcript)[1300.94][1300.97](end of transcript)[1302.97][1302.99](end of transcript)[1304.99][1305.02](end of transcript)[1307.02][1307.05](end of transcript)[1309.05][1309.08](end of transcript)[1311.08][1311.11](end of transcript)[1313.11][1313.14](end of transcript)[1315.14][1315.17](end of transcript)[1317.17][1317.20](end of transcript)[1319.20][1319.23](end of transcript)[1321.23][1321.26](end of transcript)[1323.26][1323.29](end of transcript)[1325.29][1325.32](end of transcript)[1327.32][1327.35](end of transcript)[1329.35][1329.38](end of transcript)[1331.38][1331.41](end of transcript)[1333.41][1333.44](end of transcript)[1335.44][1335.47](end of transcript)[1337.47][1337.50](end of transcript)[1339.50][1339.53](end of transcript)[1341.53][1341.56](end of transcript)[1343.56][1343.59](end of transcript)[1345.59][1345.62](end of transcript)[1347.62][1347.65](end of transcript)[1349.65][1349.68](end of transcript)[1351.68][1351.71](end of transcript)[1353.71][1353.74](end of transcript)[1355.74][1355.77](end of transcript)[1357.77][1357.80](end of transcript)[1359.80][1359.83](end of transcript)[1361.83][1361.86](end of transcript)[1363.86][1363.89](end of transcript)[1365.89][1365.92](end of transcript)[1367.92][1367.95](end of transcript)[1369.95][1369.98](end of transcript)[1371.98][1372.01](end of transcript)[1374.01][1374.04](end of transcript)[1376.04][1376.07](end of transcript)[1378.07][1378.10](end of transcript)[1380.10][1380.13](end of transcript)[1382.13][1382.16](end of transcript)[1384.16][1384.19](end of transcript)[1386.19][1386.22](end of transcript)[1388.22][1388.25](end of transcript)[1390.25][1390.28](end of transcript)[1392.28][1392.31](end of transcript)[1394.31][1394.34](end of transcript)[1396.34][1396.37](end of transcript)[1398.37][1398.40](end of transcript)[1400.40][1400.43](end of transcript)[1402.43][1402.46](end of transcript)[1404.46][1404.49](end of transcript)[1406.49][1406.52](end of transcript)[1408.52][1408.55](end of transcript)[1410.55][1410.58](end of transcript)[1412.58][1412.61](end of transcript)[1414.61][1414.64](end of transcript)[1416.64][1416.67](end of transcript)[1418.67][1418.70](end of transcript)[1420.70][1420.73](end of transcript)[1422.73][1422.76](end of transcript)[1424.76][1424.79](end of transcript)[1426.79][1426.82](end of transcript)[1428.82][1428.85](end of transcript)[1430.85][1430.88](end of transcript)[1432.88][1432.91](end of transcript)[1434.91][1434.94](end of transcript)[1436.94][1436.97](end of transcript)[1438.97][1439.00](end of transcript)[1441.00][1441.03](end of transcript)[1443.03][1443.06](end of transcript)[1445.06][1445.09](end of transcript)[1447.09][1447.12](end of transcript)[1449.12][1449.15](end of transcript)[1451.15][1451.18](end of transcript)[1453.18][1453.21](end of transcript)[1455.21][1455.24](end of transcript)[1457.24][1457.27](end of transcript)[1459.27][1459.30](end of transcript)[1461.30][1461.33](end of transcript)[1463.33][1463.36](end of transcript)[1465.36][1465.39](end of transcript)[1467.39][1467.42](end of transcript)[1469.42][1469.45](end of transcript)[1471.45][1471.48](end of transcript)[1473.48][1473.51](end of transcript)[1475.51][1475.54](end of transcript)[1477.54][1477.57](end of transcript)[1479.57][1479.60](end of transcript)[1481.60][1481.63](end of transcript)[1483.63][1483.66](end of transcript)[1485.66][1485.69](end of transcript)[1487.69][1487.72](end of transcript)[1489.72][1489.75](end of transcript)[1491.75][1491.78](end of transcript)[1493.78][1493.81](end of transcript)[1495.81][1495.84](end of transcript)[1497.84][1497.87](end of transcript)[1499.87][1499.90](end of transcript)[1501.90][1501.93](end of transcript)[1503.93][1503.96](end of transcript)[1505.96][1505.99](end of transcript)[1507.99][1508.02](end of transcript)[1510.02][1510.05](end of transcript)[1512.05][1512.08](end of transcript)[1514.08][1514.11](end of transcript)[1516.11][1516.14](end of transcript)[1518.14][1518.17](end of transcript)[1520.17][1520.20](end of transcript)[1522.20][1522.23](end of transcript)[1524.23][1524.26](end of transcript)[1526.26][1526.29](end of transcript)[1528.29][1528.32](end of transcript)[1530.32][1530.35](end of transcript)[1532.35][1532.38](end of transcript)[1534.38][1534.41](end of transcript)[1536.41][1536.44](end of transcript)[1538.44][1538.47](end of transcript)[1540.47][1540.50](end of transcript)[1542.50][1542.53](end of transcript)[1544.53][1544.56](end of transcript)[1546.56][1546.59](end of transcript)[1548.59][1548.62](end of transcript)[1550.62][1550.65](end of transcript)[1552.65][1552.68](end of transcript)[1554.68][1554.71](end of transcript)[1556.71][1556.74](end of transcript)[1558.74][1558.77](end of transcript)[1560.77][1560.80](end of transcript)[1562.80][1562.83](end of transcript)[1564.83][1564.86](end of transcript)[1566.86][1566.89](end of transcript)[1568.89][1568.92](end of transcript)[1570.92][1570.95](end of transcript)[1572.95][1572.98](end of transcript)[1574.98][1575.01](end of transcript)[1577.01][1577.04](end of transcript)[1579.04][1579.07](end of transcript)[1581.07][1581.10](end of transcript)[1583.10][1583.13](end of transcript)[1585.13][1585.16](end of transcript)[1587.16][1587.19](end of transcript)[1589.19][1589.22](end of transcript)[1591.22][1591.25](end of transcript)[1593.25][1593.28](end of transcript)[1595.28][1595.31](end of transcript)[1597.31][1597.34](end of transcript)[1599.34][1599.37](end of transcript)[1601.37][1601.40](end of transcript)[1603.40][1603.43](end of transcript)[1605.43][1605.46](end of transcript)[1607.46][1607.49](end of transcript)[1609.49][1609.52](end of transcript)[1611.52][1611.55](end of transcript)[1613.55][1613.58](end of transcript)[1615.58][1615.61](end of transcript)[1617.61][1617.64](end of transcript)[1619.64][1619.67](end of transcript)[1621.67][1621.70](end of transcript)[1623.70][1623.73](end of transcript)[1625.73][1625.76](end of transcript)
Okay. During the executive session, the board approved the appointment of Dr. Quentin Ransburg as Human Resource Manager. They approved the employment of Dr. Washington Cole as Superintendent for the Knoxsby County School District. They approved the contracts for teachers and administrators at our special schools, the School of the Arts, the School for the Deaf and Blind, School for the Math and Science, and accepted resignations and retirements from each of those schools. We also brought all of our salaries in compliance with the State Personnel Board classification that was -- for the compensation plan that was passed in the 2021 legislative session. That included approval of increase in salaries for some MDE staff, approval of an increase in salary for the Chief Operations Officers, the Chief Accountability Officer, and the Chief of the Office of Technology and Strategic Services to bring it all in compliance, as I said, with the State Personnel Board. Those were the actions that were taken during the course of the executive session. Do we have a report on any meetings that any of you have attended?[1705.57][1705.59](applause) Okay? Anybody need approval to go to a meeting out of state?[1711.27][1711.29](applause) All right. Then our next board meeting will be April the 21st, 2022, here in our boardroom in Jackson, Mississippi at the Central High School building. I did get -- Dr. McGee, he got notification that the Senate has passed the teacher pay raise and it will now go to the House for a vote, we think, tomorrow. So that is certainly good news and we're excited about that. Anybody else have any other information? Then if not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
(inaudible).[1747.37][1747.40](laughing)
Is there a second? Dr. -- Mr. Jacobs? All in favor?
(inaudible).
All right.
(inaudible).
Thank you very much.